I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Lefever?
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a suggested motion that the Board enter closed session to discuss probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Okay, if we could come back to order, please, we'll continue on with our meeting. Thank you all for joining us this evening. The Board of Education has heard from a large number of individuals, and we value your input. Over the past four years, we heard from hundreds of people through email, hours of public comments, and in personal conversations. Many of the messages the Board received were similar. We called this special Board meeting so the Board could conduct its work surrounding this important matter, and we are mindful of the many voices we heard. As Board President and pursuant to Board policy, BDDH, I directed Dr. Cates to prepare the agenda in such a way to limit the number of individuals who will be recognized to speak. I directed him to publish information so that all citizens interested in appearing before the Board would be aware of the procedures surrounding citizens' appearances this evening. The parameters for citizens' appearances this evening were published on the website more than forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, were set forth in the agenda for this evening's meeting, and have been provided to each individual entering our meeting this evening. Each person entering the meeting this evening who was interested in addressing the Board drew a number. This number established the order of people who will address the Board. If you are not called, we invite you to provide written comments to the Board or to speak at another Board meeting. Our next Board meeting will take place one week from today on Thursday, October seventeenth, at Conant High School. The Board will not be voting on this policy tonight, nor will it vote on October seventeenth. The Board may consider a vote pertaining to this policy on Thursday, November fourteenth. Once the citizens' appearances portion of the meeting begins, we will listen to comments from ten individuals. Tonight, each person will be granted three minutes to express their views. A timer is in front of Mr. Kovak, and he will issue the speaker a notification when one minute remains. This is an open, public meeting, and appearances before the Board are open to any one of the public. The public participation portion of our meeting is not a dialogue with citizens, and Board members will not answer questions or respond to speakers' comments. After the citizens' appearances, the Board will engage in an open discussion about the policy. Dr. Cates, would you like to make some opening remarks?
Good evening and welcome to everyone who is here tonight. At our Board of Education meeting held on September nineteenth, the Policy Committee and the Administration presented the proposed Equal Educational Opportunities Policy to the Board for its first review. Policies require at least two reviews before adoption. We listened to twenty-five randomly selected people with passion on both sides of the policy. During its discussion, some Board members expressed that they wanted to better understand the procedures that we apply in our current practices and to reconcile those with the procedures we would apply according to the proposed policy, to ensure both equal access to and protected rights for all students. We have long recognized transgender identity, and we have provided supports to transgender students through consistent practices. When requested by the family, we have changed a student's name and gender in the student's official school record. In accordance with the IHSA regulations, we have supported participation of gender nonconforming students on the sports teams of a student's stated gender. And for years, we have authorized a student's use of the restroom that conforms to the student's stated gender identity. Four years ago, the district reached an agreement with the Federal Office for Civil Rights to support a transgender student's access to the locker room of the student's stated gender identity. The Board's consideration drew large crowds of interested citizens. After many long hours of discussion and debate, the Board voted to support access to the locker room of a transgender student's stated gender identity, with the agreement that the transgender student would change clothes in one of several privacy areas in the locker room. The privacy areas in our locker rooms are available to any student. Importantly, the district's past decisions to open access to restrooms and locker rooms for use by gender nonconforming students has caused no issues among our students for years. Because granting access to locker rooms based on a student's stated gender identity was not explicitly articulated in existing laws four years ago, our Board weighed input from countless citizens and sources before ultimately determining our balanced practice, carefully articulated to balance the interests of all students. Throughout the past four years, our balanced practices have withstood challenges in federal court from those who have claimed we should provide no access to our restrooms or locker rooms. And similarly, our practice prevailed over a request for a preliminary injunction filed with the Illinois Department of Human Rights and appealed in state court. The key defining feature of our balanced practice has been the requirement that a transgender student use the privacy-changing area in the locker room if they wish to use the locker room. A lot can change in four years. Boards of Education change every two years, and our Board has changed two times since our practice was first adopted. Our current Board of Education now considers our new proposed policy in light of all the following. One, our own direct experience provides clear guidance that providing locker room access based on gender identity has not resulted in any disruption in our locker rooms. Two, other school districts that allow locker room access without any limitation as to where transgender students may change clothes have successfully implemented such policies without disruption and in a manner that protects the interests of all students. Three, as our nation and our immediate communities become more informed about and accepting of gender nonconforming students, we want to ensure equal access without restriction. Our Board members are members of our community. Given that they saw understanding about our procedures, we can presume that others seek the same understanding. Like most matters, greater levels of acceptance begin with understanding. To inform everyone as to our practices, we have publicly shared our procedures and prepared a frequently asked questions document to address various questions and inaccurate perceptions that persist surrounding gender nonconforming students. Briefly, I will address our essential guiding principles. Transgender students are those who consistently assert a gender identity different from their sex assigned at birth. Upon a request from the student's parent, the student's stated gender in the official school record establishes the student's gender for consideration of access to gender-specific facilities. Access to gender-specific facilities by transgender students may take place, as articulated in a gender support plan developed in partnership between the family and school personnel, including an administrator. Students who desire to assert a gender identity different than the student's sex assigned at birth must make a formal request with their parents to make the necessary change in school records. Then the student, their parents, and the school will collaboratively develop a gender support plan that addresses the individualized support of the student in a manner that is consistent with the rights and needs of other students in the larger school community, including restroom and locker room access. District 211 respects and honors all individuals. Our staff members, our administration, and most importantly, our students stand ready with understanding and support to adopt this policy. Policies in District 211 require two reviews by the Board of Education before adoption. The proposed policy that is the focus of tonight's meeting will not be voted upon by the Board of Education at our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting on October seventeen. Because Board members wanted to understand our procedures better before voting, at our next scheduled Board meeting, only one week from tonight's discussion, the earliest that the Board would vote on the proposed Equal Educational Opportunities Policy will be at our Board of Education meeting scheduled for Thursday, November fourteen. Thank you for the many messages we have received and for your thoughtful and respectful comments this evening in support of this district and all our students.
In order to use our time efficiently for the citizens' appearances portion, I will call two names at a time. The first individual would please go directly to the podium and prepare to address the Board. The second individual will come forward and wait in the designated chair alongside Mrs. Cronus. We will continue this practice until we hear from ten individuals. Our first speaker this evening will be Musia Burke. And on deck, we have Tracy Salvatore.
Good evening, and thank you for your service, and also thank you for the procedures and the frequently asked questions. They were extremely helpful. I'm here tonight to continue to understand and learn more about this proposed policy by the Board of Education for equal education opportunities. Before I get more into that, I would like to address the fact that when people come to the podium to speak, it is extremely admirable, and they should be proud of advocating for their beliefs. Regardless of where your beliefs fall, behind every word, comment, innuendo said, there is a human who is listening to it. Most importantly, we have students in this room, and if we as adults cannot model positive behavior, who will? I have been in too many of these meetings where hurtful and damaging words are being used. There is absolutely no need or effectiveness to belittle another person because they are different than you. We don't have to agree on any topic to speak with kindness, respect, and dignity. This issue has and will continue to be a spirited conversation amongst the community. In my opinion, the Board of Education should be reminded as to why this policy has come to the Board table. Ask yourselves, is the intent of the policy in the best interest of students? Many people in this room could argue the fact alone from both sides of the spectrum. There is no arguing that our community is passionate about inclusion and exclusion. However, I would share that although this room seems like the community, it is a segment of it. There is a silent majority of people who are choosing not to voice their opinions, probably because it falls somewhere in the middle. You have been elected to represent all of the community, not only the people who share in your personal beliefs. You have taken an oath to do what's in the best interest of the community and district. You could choose to merge those two things together or divide them. The reality is, the best thing for the district and the community is to work in a forward direction together. When our schools are doing well and focused on educating the future generations, then everybody wins. Mr. Dombrowski, at the last meeting, you alluded to the fact there might be litigation or other legal expenses behind this policy, and you had no problem spending money on that. Considering you are constantly criticizing the district and their spending, please know that, yes, taxes are high. Reasonable people can understand that if the money is being used for the betterment of our youth and overall community, it's worth it. Please know that myself and others do not want our tax dollars wasted on litigation and legal matters. Please spend the money on educational opportunities. Mr. Kramer, I appreciate your passion for-
Thank you. Tracy Salvatore is next, and Gabriel Berka, you're on deck, please.
Good evening, members of the District 211 Board of Education and Administration. I applaud you in your proposal, the new transgender access policy. As a concerned Schaumburg resident, I attended and spoke at many Board meetings in the fall of two thousand fifteen and winter of two thousand sixteen in support of equality for transgender students following the OCR findings. I am forever changed by that experience. As outlined in Dr. Cates's thoughtful public statement, in the last four years, there have been many advancements in the understanding and acceptance of transgender individuals in society and in our community for the better. It's time now to take this next step in adopting this policy that furthers District 211's legacy of compassion and equality for all students. Other districts are doing this without incidents for years. Further, the Illinois Human Rights Commission has ruled twice in the past several months that full access is required under the Illinois Human Rights Act. What we are doing here is merely consistent with what the law in Illinois is. Based on the signage that I'm seeing, you will also hear tonight a lot about team sports. But as this Board and the Administration know, the participation in team sports by students who are transgender is ruled by the IHSA. This policy will change nothing about athletics in District 211. I am proud of the district for taking this step. Our community is one of love and acceptance. Continuing these fundamental values through full inclusion in our schools is essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel Berka, you're up. And Nat Duran, you're on deck, please.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Berka, and I am the parent of a girl, a biological girl, who attends from high school. She's at a school swim competition this evening and cannot be here, so I'm here to represent her interests. I was very disappointed to read the proposed policy that clearly indicates full capitulation to the demands of a single ideology. High school students at the age are at their peak of discomfort and vulnerability with regard to the physical, emotional, and psychological aspects of human sexuality. I was looking forward to see what protections the district will put in place to safeguard the privacy of all students at this formative age, and was disappointed to see that for cis students, there were none. I truly believe that even though this is a charged topic, if all stakeholders are reasonable and willing to cooperate, a compromise can be reached. A compromise, however, by definition, is a state of affair very different from the proposed one-sided policy. Unrestricted access for biological boys to girls' locker rooms or shower areas is not acceptable, full stop. And neither is any kind of arrangement where a girl is exposed on someone else's terms to things she does not want to see or experience. If a girl wants to be seen naked by a boy, or to see a boy naked, it should be on her own terms, not on terms imposed by the school district or the whims of a particular student. My daughter is a swimmer. She changes at least once or twice a day at school, for morning and evening practice. Having a boy changing and showering in the girls' showers or compete with her on the same team is nonsense. Strip clubs have age limits. Pornographic websites have age limits. Not only that, but one has to make a conscious choice to visit them or perform there. Yet here, we have the school district turning my underage daughter into a stripper, against her will, in the name of inclusivity? Have we, as a society and specifically as a school district, completely lost our minds? Are you taking us parents for fools with this ideology thinly veiled as an inclusive policy? It cannot be that the only way trans students can feel included is by imposing on the privacy of cis students. Surely, we can accommodate students that wish to retain their privacy and provide them with private showers and locker rooms and a safe and welcoming learning environment. Though I address my comments from the perspective of a girl student, the same arguments clearly apply for boy students. I urge the Board to unequivocally reject the currently proposed policy and to adopt a more inclusive one that respects not only the well-being of trans students, but also that of cis or straight students. Our kids are not guinea pigs to be experimented with with these kinds of policies. A person's right to inclusion ends where it impinges on another person's.
Time has expired, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nat Duran, you're up. And Teri Paulson, you're on deck, please.
Oh, I'm on. All right. Hello. Good evening. Good evening, Board members, larger school district community. My name is Nat Duran, and I am the Youth Engagement Manager of the Illinois Safe Schools Alliance, a program of the Public Health Institute of Metropolitan Chicago, which works to make pre-K through twelve school spaces safer for students who hold LGBTQ plus identities. In this work, I have the honor and privilege of working with youth leaders in the Safer Schools movement from all over the state, and I've been lucky to do so for the last four and a half years. First and foremost, I want to take a moment to thank Dr. Cates for your thoughtful comments that preceded the citizen appearances at last month's Board meeting. It felt particularly meaningful to hear your reflection upon the last four years and the progress made in terms of better understanding the needs of trans students and this district's explicit efforts to meet those needs in a setting framed by banners reading, "I Promise to be an upstander, not a bystander." Just as the students whose signatures adorned those banners made a promise to their peers and school leaders to stand up for what is right in their own day-to-day lives, you all have taken the steps to do what is right by your district students in even considering this new policy. I have no idea what it's like to be a school Board member. If these meetings are any indication, the role is not a glamorous one. And I'm willing to bet that y'all often don't get the recognition or gratitude that's deserved when you do take a stand for that which is just and fair in the face of purposefully misdirected opposition. So I will also take time today to thank you for trusting the students in this district to know who they are at their core, for trusting in the experts who overwhelmingly say that policies like the one proposed is literally a lifesaver for trans youth. The American Psychological Association, National Association of School Psychologists, American School Counselor Association, and National Association of Secondary School Principals all offer statements or positions that support locker room usage that aligns with a student's gender identity and asserts that your proposed practice of offering more private accommodations to any who may request them as best practice. Earlier this year, a pair of reports courtesy of the Trevor Project shone a light of the importance of just one supportive adult in a young person's life. I am grateful, deeply grateful, that the students in this district, through your leadership, are demonstrated that they have so many supportive adults in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Paulson, you're up. Alma Kubata, you're on deck, please.
Good evening. My name is Teri Paulson, and I'm from New Hope Community Church in Palatine. I want to make it clear from the outset that I am addressing only those of you who support this policy tonight. I'd like to start by sharing a news story I read last week about a transgender rugby player, transgender rugby players who are injuring their female teammates and opponents in a women's league in Great Britain. Trans player Kelly Morgan had this to say about it. "I feel guilty, but what can I do? I don't go out to hurt anybody. I just want to play rugby." That comment highlights a glaring defect of this policy and the trans rights movement in general. It's clear that this man's highest priority is his own personal fulfillment, to the point where he doesn't even recognize his teammates as people. His statement indicates that they are simply props on the stage of his life. Their rights, their pain, and their safety count as nothing. Ironically, one of the motto of trans activists is, "We exist." Sadly, they act as if no one else does. Likewise, you are treating the majority of D-211 students as props. Their welfare seems to be a non-issue to you. I have yet to hear any of you who support this policy even acknowledge that it does affect other students, especially girls. One of your unspoken assumptions seems to be that in light of the vulnerability of trans students, it is morally justified to sacrifice athletic opportunities and scholarship money for female athletes, the well-being of girls who have experienced sexual abuse, and several very basic rights for all students and faculty. If my child required that much shielding from reality and sacrifice from others, I wouldn't put them in public school. Let me be clear, I do not blame trans kids, not at all. They don't have enough life experience to recognize that they are being lied to and used by adults who are exploiting them for political gain. Board members supporting this policy have made themselves accomplices to this by reorganizing our schools around their irrational and immoral demands. Are we really now to believe that the best way to treat a mental disorder is to do everything we can to encourage it? That idea is so obviously nonsensical, it's hard to know how to address it without being rude. It would be funny if it weren't so terribly destructive. The solution to the problems of gender dysphoria kids is not coed locker rooms, drugs, surgery, or turning other people's children into props. You have been confronted with the truth time and time again, yet you refuse to be moved. Basic decency, logic, and even God himself seem to mean nothing to you. It's as if you are impervious to reality. Don't be fooled.
Your time has ended.
Alma Kubata, you're up. And Kristin Danert, you're on deck, please.
Thank you. I first have to say that I had no intention of addressing the Board tonight. And the reason I'm here, but I would like to thank you. I would like to thank you for choosing to treat transgender students as equals of other students, and for having the courage to do that. The reason I'm here tonight also is because I was here at the last meeting, and one of the things that really disturbed me was the ignorance, the false equivalencies, and the anger and the hatred that I felt coming from people. When I say false equivalency, what I mean is, a transgender student in a locker room is not going to a pornographic show. It's not asking everybody in the audience, as one person did, to strip naked. I mean, that's exhibitionism. I'm saying the ignorance that was expressed is ignorance from another era. I don't even recognize it as being part of two thousand nineteen. And I can't understand the fear and the hatred that's being expressed by so many people. It saddens me that it's happening here in our community, and it saddens me that people are cheering for it. And I want to thank you again for your supporting the transgender community, for your supporting equality for all the students. Because I think that's-
You have one more minute.
-what you should be doing. And you're doing your job, and I want you to know that many in the community support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Danert, you're up. And Bob Mazur, you're on deck, please.
Good evening. My name's Kristin Danert. I live up near the Wisconsin State Line. I'm transgender. I'm fifty-four years old, and I'm not an ideology. I've known I'm transgender since I was four years old in nineteen seventy. And I did finally transition later in life because, you know, we didn't know what we know about it today, and so I put it off. But anyways, I'd like, there seems to be some confusion or the disagreement is over whether I'm legitimate or not. I am a human being, okay? And as far as whether gender, being transgender is real, it is real. I mean, it seems to be about anatomy, but it's not anatomy. I defer the Board to do all the research that's out there from the American Medical Association, the World Health Organization, the American Academy of Pediatricians, the American Psychological Association, have all removed it as a mental illness. Sure, back in the seventies, it was considered a mental illness, and the treatment was reparative. But the treatment today is, just live as your true self. And I've never been happier since I've been living as my true self. Gender dysphoria is not transgender. Gender dysphoria occurs when I'm deprived of living as my true self. And when I hear hateful comments or negativity, that causes gender dysphoria. Gender dysphoria is being deprived of living as our true selves. Again, my physician, my internal health provider determines my gender, not wishful thinking by the general public. And the other comment I'd like to make, and this is kind of winging it, is that there's a lot of talk about sports. Well, a couple years ago, I'm a very athletic person in the sense of, I go for a bike ride every day, and I go to YMCA. As a matter of fact, I change in the women's locker room. I actually use the swimming pool, and I actually change in the women's locker room discreet. I go in there, I change, and go out. No one sees me, no one knows, no one cares. And I've never had any problems. But anyway, I'd like to talk about is that I ride my bike every day, and I decided to do a four K, a five K. I decided to do a five K. I trained really hard. I ran every day for five miles for a couple months. If you look at the data, if you look at the data out there, three women beat me. I mean, I wanted to win really, really hard. Three women in my age group, three women in my age group actually beat me, and I beat three women. Three guys beat me, or three or four guys beat me. I fell right in the middle, and I really trained really, really hard. It's called a safe place, and the data's out on the internet if you want to actually see it. So, and the estrogen that they prescribed me actually weakens my muscles. And I think most kids at the age that they're in this school- And I think most kids at the age that they're in this school have been on an estrogen regimen, which, I'm much weaker. I couldn't believe it. I actually hurt myself a few times because I lost muscle mass. So I just want to remind the board about all the medical side of things. And it's not an ideology, it's medically backed by the American Medical Association and the World Health Organization. And I hope you all go out and do all that research and realize this is legitimate, we're human beings.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Mazur, you're up. And Mike Vandemeyer, you're on deck, please.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say I'm proud to be a Palatine member, living in a great town and a great district. My three children have gone through 211, and have had an incredible journey, served us well. So I want to thank you for all of that, for decades of just really being a stellar community and a stellar school district. I'm here tonight to learn. I prayed before coming in the building tonight that love would be in my heart, and love would be how I resolve what I hear. Kudos to you. I think there's people on both sides that don't understand what people are saying, and people aren't listening. I would never say what you feel and what you're experiencing is unreal. I think there's people on this side that don't understand what cheering is going on. It is not mean. There is not true equality going on in this offering. There's portions of equality, but true equality for all? When I heard Mr. Boker, Burka, and the fine lady over here speak, and all the cheers came out, it was about true equality. To have the sensitivity for the non-transgender student and what they are feeling. I have three very strong young women that went through this program, and they're independent thinkers. They have their own opinions, I'm not going to share them. They probably didn't feel the way some of the children are feeling, but they know a lot do. And they know a lot, it disrupts them. It bothers their sleep. It bothers their daily activities. It's how they feel as a girl. It bothers them. And I have not heard anything tonight, and in the paperwork, that this committee actually is taking that
You have one more minute.
98 percenters' feelings and needs into account. Now, I think if this is handled through love, there's Occam's razor. The obvious stuff is usually the simplest choices. If you account for everybody, I don't think anyone on either side is going to be upset. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Vandemeyer, you're up. Sarah Johnson, you're on deck, please.
Good evening, everyone. Just so you all know, I was number 46, in case you're trying to do the math in your head, all right? Just going to make a series of statements and ask a series of questions here. My name is Mike Vandemeyer. I lead a church in District 211. Is this what you want your school district to be known for? This issue? Where does this road lead, and what will you have to allow next in order to avoid being labeled and sued? Are you supporting this policy because you have a conviction that you're making the right decision? Or are you supporting this policy out of fear of being labeled? Do you believe in your heart of hearts as individuals that this is the greatest good for the highest number of people? Or does it just keep you out of trouble? Have you asked yourselves, have you counted the cost? What problem does this solve versus what problem does this create? Have you asked yourselves, what will it take before the school board acknowledges that they have made the wrong choice? Has anybody taken a survey on how the District 211 students feel about this matter? Do they feel safe? Do they approve of this? Proponents of policies like this think that those young people can choose their gender. Why don't we let them choose in this very matter? You'll find that kids are a lot braver and a lot more concerned and a lot more interested in this matter than their absent and silent parents. I challenge the school board to pivot and start making the right decisions. The unintended consequences have been very predictable, leading to this point, as predictable as the next set of unintended consequences. Since the position that you clearly hold is that gender is a non-binary choice, then why are the students only given a binary choice for bathroom usage and not offered a logical third, non-binary option? Your logic that led to this point is incongruous. I'm not asking you to pander to suburbanite evangelicals. I'm asking you to pander to basic biology and the dignity of the vast majority.
I'm here to urge you, not only to vote no on the proposed policy, but to reverse the existing policies that allow students any access to opposite-sex locker rooms or restrooms at all. By their own admission, a lot of trans males identify as women because, growing up, they liked things like dresses, sparkles, dolls, and the color pink instead of stereotypical boy things. But our locker rooms are not there to be fun little clubs where we talk about how much we love girl stuff. Locker rooms are segregated because humans are sexually dimorphic species, and when uncovering the body parts that make us sexually dimorphic, we need privacy. Locker room segregation needs to be based on what body parts a person actually has and not what they wish they had, and certainly not on irrelevant things like what colors, clothes, and toys they liked growing up. Dr. Kate seems to think that as long as a student in an opposite-sex spaces doesn't touch another student, then no violation has occurred. This is false. Hiding cameras in bathrooms, peeping toms watching people undressed, disseminating intimate photos of a former partner, and flashing genitals at passersby are all examples of sexual violations that only occur visually. They are illegal, and they cause profound psychological distress in their victims. Victims of such crimes have even died by suicide because of them. Being viewed by the opposite sex in a state of undress against a person's will is sexual violation. Dr. Kate said last time that mixed-sex spaces have been implemented elsewhere without incident. This is also false. Such policies elsewhere have had negative impacts. A particular side effect for girls is that they are missing school because of their periods because they don't want to deal with menstrual needs in mixed-sex bathrooms. This is not a one-off, but a pattern in schools with mixed-sex bathrooms. I want to emphasize how shameful and inexcusable this is. Girls missing school because of their periods is an issue in third-world countries like some places in Africa where girls don't even have rags to use as pads. Yet here in first-world countries, we're reintroducing this problem, and not because of a lack of resources, but because the transgender population is demanding that everyone else bow down to their desires. It is unacceptable. I'd like to encourage you to visit two online resources, WomenAreHuman.com and the subreddit ThisNeverHappens. The latter is so-called because it catalogs instances of trans-identified males behaving in ways that trans activists promise will never happen. In reality, it happens a lot, and this subreddit has countless examples of why we need sex-segregated spaces. WomenAreHuman.com catalogs similar incidents. Again, that is the This Never Happens subreddit and WomenAreHuman.com. I recognize that standing up for what's right is challenging, and to that I say it is your moral obligation to fight for what is right even when it's hard. Legality is not morality. It is our duty to resist court rulings.
Time has ended.
Thank you. That concludes the citizen appearances portion of the meeting. Now, the Board of Education has the discussion. That's okay. There are lots of people on the list, and we're only going to hear from 10 tonight, but I appreciate you pointing that out. Thank you. If you have comments that you'd like to submit to the board, you can leave them with Mr. Kovak, or you could come to another meeting we'll have later. So now we open it up to the board for a discussion of the proposed policy concerning equal educational opportunities.
As I pointed out at the September 19th introduction of the policy, we specifically are adopting language in this policy that isolates and introduces terminology such as gender identity beyond what is prescribed within Title IX, Title VII. Those are definitions under sex. Additionally, when I go through the Human Rights Act, I'm not seeing specific conclusion of the language that we're adopting. I think less is more. We should follow what's prescribed as far as what we define for equal education, and it should just be inclusive of everyone, regardless of these quantifiers, if you will.
Title IX and Title VII are federal regulations, and it's very important to recognize that school districts are bound by both state and federal regulations. And Illinois is very clear that gender identity is one of the protected classes, and the guidance to us is crystal clear that this indeed is the right course of action according to Illinois law.
Do you have that reference? Because I have a copy of it, and I couldn't find anything relative to gender identity. I'm more than happy to
The Human Rights Act.
Right. But where within that section?
We'd be glad to show it to you.
Great. Okay.
Quiet down, please. Now is time for the board to discuss the policy. If you're going to interrupt the meeting, we'll have to ask you to leave. We'd like for you to stay to hear the entire discussion. Thank you.
So, I mean, I can read the specific section, but I see nothing in here that shows gender identity. Should I read it, or?
You know, you don't need to read it, Ms. Dombrowski. So the position that we have, that the district has, that we are moving forward with, is that it is defined in the Illinois Department of Human Rights and the Human Rights Act, and that is how we will proceed.
I have been very clear from the beginning, even as a citizen when I first started attending meetings over three years ago. I've been very clear about where I've stood about this and why. My stance has not changed. So I really appreciate you releasing the procedures. I think it's helpful for all of us, and I certainly hope that it's helpful for all of our community members to see. And I support the policy as it's written. I also appreciate that the procedures are kept procedural and the policy is kept strategic as it's meant to be set out. So my stance has not changed from the beginning, and I support the policy as it is written. I think it's to the benefit, not just of trans students or gender non-conforming students, I think it's to the benefit of all students as a person who often presents more masculine, sometimes more feminine, simply because I like to wear a tie. It liberates people from acting as, those who police gender expression, and that really has, that's not written into what we expect our staff and administrators to do at our school. Plus, for all of the reasons that we've heard stated time and time again, I think the direction is clear from a risk reduction standpoint as a district, as well as, and very much most importantly, for the well-being of our young people who attend our schools and our staff.
Just, we received a lot of emails, pro and con. I read them all, I'm sure everybody else did, and thought about them. There were two particular emails that addressed, I think, each of us individually, and they contained a list of questions. Each one may be 15 or 20. Will the administration be able to answer those questions before the next board meeting?
I did send a synthesized response to one of the questioners. I don't know if I forwarded
No, I got that, but you will not, the administration won't answer the questions point by point?
We provided a synthesized response to the questions.
A summary, essentially, but no point-to-point answers.
It was a synthesized response, yeah.
Then with respect to the policy itself, is there a religious provision for opting out, so to speak? You know, the policy talks about being provided another space. How would that go, how would that actually?
Sure. So the, one of the benefits of actually articulating our policy is that all students will understand where we are. It is to benefit of everybody. And because this district and because our resources are fortunate in that we are, we do have places available, we do have places available in our schools to support requests for different lockers, to request for alternate spaces, and we are fortunate to be able to provide those. And so those are available to any student who would request.
And then one last thing. The procedures are very clear on what defines a transgender student. You know, they have to go through a process, and it's in their, they are who they say they are in the official school record. It doesn't address, on the other side, that I could see, if a student themselves wants to have a different space assigned or a different locker, the procedures say the student must ask for it. It leaves out the parent. There may be some instances where the student wants, doesn't want to do that, but the parent does want to have a reassignment. Is that, could that be written into the policy, that it's either/or of the process?
I wouldn't recommend it being written into the policy, but in terms of our practices, if a student were to request another space, and you're saying that the parent didn't agree with the student requesting another space?
Or the reverse.
Okay, so any of our students are free to choose a lot of what happens to them during the school day. So their parent may want them to go to the media center, and they choose to go to the cafeteria. I mean, there are many different ways that students and parents' views about where they should go differ. But if a student would, if a parent would request an alternate space, we would make such, for instance, an locker assignment. We could make an alternate locker room available. If the student chose not to use that, however, we are not going to track that student down and tell them, "You must use this other alternate locker room."
So if the parent requests an assignment, you're saying that the district would not enforce that request from a parent?
We would make that resource available.
Right. And knowing that there was a request from a parent with respect to a minor child, are you saying that the administration would not enforce the parent's request and allow the student to do what they want?
That's beyond what we would ask staff members to do.
I'm talking about the parent.
Yeah, exactly. You're asking staff members to enforce
The parent has asked for a specific further child.
Exactly. But you're asking the enforcement to come from school administrators, not the parents themselves.
The parent isn't, aren't here all the time. There's an expectation
Exactly.
That the administration will act on the parent's decision, not the student's decision.
I know it's difficult, and I'm not, I'm sympathetic to the position, and certainly the parent in that position, I would feel in their shoes extremely upset. But at the same time, that doesn't mean that I can expect staff and school administrators to act as my proxies during the school day when we're talking about people at the high school level. Like, to physically go in and force a kid from their original locker assignment, which in your hypothetical scenario they prefer, and then force them to use the locker room as requested by their parents.
Isn't there, what's the legal term? Inparental locus? Loca? The teachers are local parents when they're performing their job. They're acting as a parent.
It sounds like you disagree, but what I'm describing to you is, the answer to your question is, no, we would not take attendance to make sure that a student went into the locker room assigned by the parent.
I disagree with that, you're correct.
The students develop and develop their own beliefs, and they would choose which locker room, although per the parents' which locker room, although per the parent's request, we would make that resource available in an alternate locker room if that were the request.
I think there is an important part that's missing also in regards to, I think there's a part that's missing there, because you cannot expect a teacher or an administrator to shadow that student. If the young person wants to do one thing and the parents want them to do another, there's communication missing at that heart. So they need to sit down and talk about it and start to understand one another, because we can't do that for, you know, having 2,000 students at a school. So we try to, I believe that we do try to understand and do what the parents are requesting, but there's got to be that communication. They both need to be agreeing, because you don't know what the young person's going to do at school.
Just to further the discussion on that, if we fail to see a student off a bus and into class, that's that driver's responsibility, right? To verify that the bus is cleared and that the student isn't left behind on the bus, correct?
Well, to be left behind on the bus, correct, but once the student departs the bus, the student can go just about anywhere.
But they still have to check in to make sure they're not left behind on a bus. And I think that's more or less what Mr. Kramer's alluding to, is that if the parent says this student should be in this class and they fail to be in that class, there is some responsibility to find about, you know, find their whereabouts. I mean, we don't want students wandering into the gym under bleachers and things like that. We want to keep track of where they are. So to that end, having accommodations there, but also verifying that if those accommodations were provided and agreed to with the parent, that they're checking in or being utilized.
So attendance at class would be monitored in every class, but attendance in a locker room is not?
Right, but then if a student requests privacy outside of the locker room and they find a washroom and then they fail to report to gym, that would be something we would follow up and make sure that they just didn't wander away somewhere. I mean, we have truancy laws and things like that, so there are pieces to this that we are responsible for as a district.
But we're not responsible, yes, but it's a false equivalence to say if we're responsible for a person showing up to class, then we're also responsible for making sure they use locker 231 as opposed to 237 that a parent has requested. Like, that's a different kind of request, moving from one locker room, which was exactly the situation that Mr. Kramer was asking about. So I would certainly hope and expect that we, you know, of course we document a tendency and make that report available, but that's not what Mr. Kramer was asking about, at least as I understood it.
No, it's not. I see the administration essentially overriding a parent's will and desires for their minor child. It's a different situation when the student is 18.
I disagree with you, Mr. Kramer, simply because you're asking the staff to watch the student every minute that he's in school. And can we afford that time for a staff member to follow a student like that? And thus, you're not allowing the student to develop his own freedom and ideas when you do that.
And what teenager wants to be followed every minute?
Right.
There's just no way.
I don't know. Have you seen some of the Twitter feeds and followers that they try to rack up? It's... Just a quick reminder, our discussion here is supposed to be focused on the policy.
So this policy, we can bring it back there.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you just give me a couple of seconds to say something. We're supposed to be focused on the policy here, and in terms of the procedures, getting an understanding of what the backdrop is, what occurred behind the policy. So I would encourage everyone to keep that in mind. Now, Mr. Dombrowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lefever. Reviewing some of the Part 106 relative to Title IX that we reference in here, districts are permitted to separate classes with regard to sex in instances of sexual education for the purpose of human development. Obviously, boys and girls go through puberty with different goals of educating them. With the introduction of gender identity as part of this policy, how do we resolve the interest of educating on the basis of sex or physical anatomy with the gender identity? Does the student that identifies as non-binary continue in a sexual education class that teaches them about anatomy that they don't have? And how does that further their educational goals? And how would we administer that education with regard to human sexuality if we are not to isolate them and create a separate type of educational environment for them under this policy?
I'm not sure I understand your question, but I just want to clarify that regardless of any student's gender identity, we are teaching them all the same curriculum. And to somehow differentiate any person and what they're learning based on gender identity is a non-starter in my understanding. I don't comprehend that.
So we would teach boys about menstrual cycles as part of...
We already do that. All of our sexual education classes are co-ed. So the question was about sexual education classes, is that correct? Because those are taught co-ed.
Right. So we have the ability to separate by sex our phys ed classes and things like that. We have a wellness component to it. And if there is specific information that is introduced to males versus females, are we able to do that, I guess, with this policy? When sex and gender identity conflict, how do we resolve that?
I don't see how it's con...
We could, maybe we could let Dr. Kate respond if you would, please.
So transgender individuals, at their core, this is who they are, no different than any other individual. So I'm having a hard time tracking what, how that doesn't connect with us teaching every student all that we can, and every student learning all that they can. I'm not, I fundamentally don't understand how those two are related.
Again, maybe, you know, the education that my children receive, you know, it's very different. We make sure that it's appropriate and modest and things of that nature, and it's typically, I'm not discussing menstruation with my son, and nor am I, you know, nocturnal emissions with my daughter. Those are just separate things. And I'm just making sure that what we're defining here is appropriate with what our educational goals are, if we're presenting information to different sexes with different educational goals.
So our sexuality classes are generally taught co-ed at the high, certainly at the high school level, because young people learn from each other. And menstruation or nocturnal emissions are not some sort of sacred information that should only be available to certain people. There's benefit to everybody having a basic understanding of human sexuality and the diverse ways it manifests, especially through growth and development during puberty. So to my knowledge, in the state of Illinois, the only levels that are oft, sometimes segregated, and this is certainly not a uniform thing, are like the fifth and sixth grade level, but certainly not at middle school and above, and that's on purpose. Because we, menstruation is not something that, we have to protect men and male identifying people from knowing or understanding, and I think implying otherwise is, I mean, frankly, it's absurd. And so I'm not going to disagree, of course, with whatever way parents choose to educate their children in their own home. I do things very differently in my house to you, but we both have a right to do that. I also fail to see the larger point being made as respect to this policy. So this policy doesn't interfere with our ability to do that, but what you're talking about, we don't do in the first place. So our wellness curriculum is already implemented to everybody who shows up. It's not segregated and, you know, by assigned sex of birth or any other such thing, and that's for everyone's benefit. That's not somehow a deterrence to learning. It's not an inhibition. We all learn from each other, and nowhere is that more important in my experience than with high school and middle school sex education classes.
Anyone else with questions or comments?
I do have a question then. We've got the procedure in front of us, and it, there's certain steps that need to be taken. Dr. Kate, could you maybe talk a little bit about how this has been working with what we currently have in place, and maybe some of the questions that maybe have come up? I know you gave us some questions and some answers and that, but how has it been working thus far?
Yeah. So we are one of very few districts in the northern region of this state that does not have this inclusive policy. And in the districts around us, there are no incidents of concern. There is acceptance and success in implementing the policy, and we are confident in the same here. In our own experience, we have had numerous students, and we have not had any incidents. And what I would describe is that the families, many of them who have expressed an interest in unrestricted access, have patiently waited, have patiently understood, have patiently worked with us to say, "Let's enjoy the locker room," right? And it has, it has happened without incident. Similarly, in our, all of those lists of supports that I had described, there are no complications. And it is because we are receiving and supporting students as they are, as we do with many, many other individual differences among people.
If a young person does have, feels uncomfortable or does have an issue, would they talk to their gym teacher or to the counselor or, you know, if somebody has a concern? I mean, bullying goes both ways. So if a young person's uncomfortable, what's the process that they would use?
If a person's uncomfortable being in a similar locker room?
Room, or maybe, you know, kids get mean sometimes. What's the avenue for the young person to say, "Hey..."
Sure, so the guidance counselors...
"Somebody's picking on me, or I don't like this, or I'm uncomfortable."
Guidance counselors are always our first line of contact and support. A school administrator is another person who can certainly respond. Our student services directors are all well-versed in accessing plans and creating and leveraging people, but in terms of requesting alternate spaces or alternate locker rooms, alternate lockers in a locker room, our locker rooms are twice as big as this room with rows and rows of lockers. And no one can see over the lockers. It is fundamentally a non-event in the short span of time that students change their clothes to get ready to simply go and report for attendance. It is a non-issue.
But to Ms. Klimkowitz's point, if that student or young person did come with that concern, they wouldn't receive that response, would they? They would have their concern affirmed and accommodations made it or made forward?
With each of those avenues that I outlined, with the guidance counselor, through the student services director, through an administrator, any of those people can funnel this to a request for a...
Request goes from them to where?
From whom to where?
Well, they can funnel it through those three, as you stated, and that request would then go to administration, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so then that decision leaves the building, comes to the administration, and then back?
No, the administrator's in the schoolhouse, in the building. We can't assign lockers from over here.
I, just clarifying. I just want to make sure where that chain of command starts and stops.
Yes. Yeah, so there are numerous resources in the school that would be able to assign. And again, because we are fortunate here to have other locker rooms and resources, we could make those available.
Right, and they, again, just to reinforce that, they would not receive a comment that is, you know, this is a non-issue. We, you know, we don't believe that you're concerned here.
No, of course not.
Your feelings would be validated.
Right.
Yes. Many students have different lockers, for instance, for a variety of reasons. It's an everyday occurrence for a variety of reasons.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Rosenblum, anything?
I would have comments if I wasn't feeling sick.
Okay, sorry. All right, if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.